It's only what, six hours? Is it seven and a half?
Okay, it's now six o'clock. And we're to call the Montego City Council meeting to order on October the 24th, 2022. Mr. Pilchun, would everyone please stand? We're gonna ask who's gonna lead us in prayer, please.
Okay, let's go to the Lord in prayer, please. Dear heavenly Father, we thank you for this beautiful day and for the entire week. It's been so wonderful up here on the mountain. We thank you for your bounty and for the opportunity to come together and do the business of this town of Montego. Be with us this evening, give us open minds and hearts, help us to listen and understand before speaking, and to have clear thoughts when we do speak. Be with us this evening. Thank you, Lord. Guys, say a prayer.
Jamie, can we lead us in the place, please?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The actual coming approval of the minutes for September 26th and for the special meeting on October the 18th. Do you have a minute or a packet?
I'd like to use a friend.
Um, real calm.
Oh, yes, I'm here.
Nate, are you here? Alan is not here. Jessica, are you here?
I'm here.
Doran is here, I'm here. Alan is not here tonight. He found us and he has some heart problems, so he went away tonight. Okay. Alright. Okay, we have a second? We have a second for the minute?
Yes.
Okay. Any other discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
We're gonna start out with utility manager tonight, because we have a guest with us tonight. John, do you wanna come up? Ben, you wanna introduce? He's here, and then we also have our engineer here tonight. And we'll ask you to come over to this microphone, please. The presentation we're giving tonight, and if you have any questions, you'll get the contact information to ask Angela, that you can contact her.
This is Angela Oversmith from TDEC. She's up here to give a little announcement, information on what's been going on.
John, you gotta talk on the mic. Talk into the mic.
Okay, there you go. Yeah, it's on there.
This is Angela Oversmith from TDEC, and she's up here to talk to the people about what's been going on up here.
Angela, can you hear me?
Like you said, I'm Angela Oversmith with Tennessee Department of Environment and Conservation. I'm one of the managers at our Chattanooga field office for the Division of Water Resources. But I've been coming up to Montego for, this is my 20th anniversary this month with TDEC, and Montego was my very first inspection. I'm formerly known, which I may not wanna say this, because some of you have probably dealt with me and my former name, but I am formerly known up here as Angela Young. So, I've, which, you either, I may have had one in Dead or Alive posters at one time or another up here. And Montego was my very first wastewater inspection when I started with TDEC. And so, we have been through some really bad times with Montego on the wastewater side. Marilyn and I first met at Montego Plant Number Two, when it had, or Plant One, I keep my memory, when it had a total failure, collapsed, and all the wastewater had run off the mountain into springs, creeks, all the way to Pelham. So, I believe you had just come into office, Angela. There we were on a Sunday morning. I was getting ready for church, and I get a call from my director that I had to come up here. There was the Air Force up here, there was TIMA, you know, a lot of scared people, even the military was afraid of, you know, the sewage that ran off the mountain. For the next several months after that, TDEC stayed. Montego provided drinking water for all the incidents below Montego, because sewage had contaminated their spring water down there. So, it was a rough time for all of us, and, you know, we all kinda just came together, the state did, Montego did. Of course, there was enforcement actions involved with that, that were tough on both sides, the state and Montego, so that Montego could move forward and give a new wastewater plant, which I don't know if any of you have toured the beautiful facility down there, but that came from a lot of hard work on the city's part, getting grants, getting, I forget what the funding was called then. It was under President Obama, you have to...
Stimulus.
Yeah. Montego was given some grant money to build. I believe the cost was like $10 million, it could have been more, but, you know, Montego, they were under what we call moratorium at that time where you could not tie on businesses sewer. Sonic had a rough time getting sewer. Several other business owners were super upset that they couldn't tie on because of the poor maintenance and oversight of sewer system. And that's what TDEC, that's one of our ways of encouraging cities to improve their sewer. So, you know, we got beyond that. Montego spent a lot of money fixing all their sewer lines up here on the mountain. Little by little, businesses were allowed to tie on, and a lot more development came up here. And so now where we're at, you know, they're off the moratorium. People can come here, start a business. I've seen over my past 20 years, all these new restaurants coming, I don't wanna say this too loud, truck stops coming with, I know that's... But anyway, truck stops are coming up here, which, you know, brings so many people into this beautiful city. The new sidewalk that goes all the way to Swanee. I mean, there are so many beautiful things up here now, and it's all because of the city's hard work. And TDEC, we want that to continue. There are some projects that are on the horizon on the drinking water side of things. Tanks, excuse me, tanks need repairs to provide the citizens here with good drinking water. Some, I believe there's plans to do some work at the water plant, which, you know, many cities have to buy water from other cities, but you guys are fortunate that you have a good water plant and a good source of drinking water up here. And, you know, we're part of the team to help you get where you need to be on the drinking water side. There's also a lot of money right now available for municipalities that, American Rescue Plan. You know, there's a lot of stuff out there that Montego can give matching funds, give grant funds to, you know, improve things on drinking water and sewer. You guys, sewer, it is just a constant upkeep for a big town. But towns need them, because you can't even get a McDonald's or any kind of good restaurant. They will not come to your city unless you have sewer. Same with industry, you know, Pelham has struggled getting industry. They have a little tiny wastewater plant. They've struggled to get things down there in the valley, because they don't have true sewer. So, it just really limits you, so you have to take care of what you have and spend a little money on keeping it functional. John and I have had a great relationship since day one. He's my bodyguard out in the woods. We've hiked down to creeks, way down off the plateau to creeks. We've walked through sewage that day when everything collapsed. He's always here. I don't think he's gonna stay forever. I'm not gonna stay with the state forever. But he works hard, Jerome works hard. Everyone that I've met at the sewer and water plant are dedicated. They really care about water, wastewater at the city. And I've dealt with, you know, the mayor, you know, I kinda miss Lexi Orr. I don't even know where he is now, but I had a really good working relationship.
He's at, you're still an empathizer from a distance.
Oh, really? But, you know, I've worked with a lot of aldermen in years past to, you know, move things forward and keep things going up here in the town. So, came up the mountain tonight to talk to you guys about how important it is for having good sewer and water. I never thought I would be in the sewer business when I was in college, that I love it. And when I retire from the state, I'm probably gonna do sewer consulting work and other stuff like that. I love the people involved in infrastructure, and I see myself doing it for many more years. So, I appreciate the town of Montego and this guy, even though he gives me grief and I give it right back. Thanks for having me, and I'll stop talking. I could talk for two to three hours about all the different things we've learned about the wastewater plants up here, so that's all I have.
Angela, have your contact information. If anybody wants to contact you directly, they can get it from the office.
Sure.
If they have additional questions about some of the stuff that Travis will be talking about and what we're doing, but thank you for coming.
Oh, you're welcome. Anytime.
John, did you have anything with utilities that you wanted to do? Travis, you're here tonight, and I know we got something from Stacy Lilley. He took, I guess she took, well Chuck took best place when she retired in June. So, and Stacy's also working with grants, and I've got a follow-up on that as well that wasn't working yet, so.
Yep, so just to follow up, I submitted the ARP application today to the Governor for first. It's submitted, and that will enable the town of Montego to proceed with pairing the ARP and the ARC grants together for the Sewer Revoltation Project, which we got, really is a continuation of the inspection work that we started last year and a half ago. So, that application's finalized. Once TDEC reviews that application as part of this ARP grant program, then we'll be notified and be able to proceed and continue the project. And probably that project will commence sometime next summer, by the time all the grant funding is approved, contractors are onboard, designs finished, we've got the complete CC2B in the system once the weather is wet again, so we can see all the wet weather, the stormwater that's getting into the sanitary sewer system. So, once we complete that and complete the design, then sometime next summer, that project will be able to get that out, and that will utilize ARP and ARC funds that the town has.
Whenever you're talking about the metering we're going to be doing, that will identify what air problems are with air lines and what we're seeing from MSSA and from Travis City, correct?
That's right.
And so, we know what we gotta fix and what they're gonna fix, because we have to do that part to be prepared. One, Stacy, who was actually working with her grants, and I met with her, she sent this today. She said, "With Montego, which is American Recovery money", and Angela just referred to what was stimulus money. Under the Biden administration, there's $33.3 billion that we've been working towards. We won't get it all, but a portion of it. But it is, the allocated right now, non-compete funds, was $722,455. With a co-match at 20%, which was $1861, $611.25. But as you mentioned, we have an ARC grant, which we did receive, which was a half a million dollars, which will be the matching to that, correct?
That's correct.
Alright, we got, we actually got received a letter, was it a resolution we agreed for Marion County, that Marion County will be awarding us $132,641, which is also of ARP money, which again, the funding match would be $108,160.25, which would also be part of covered out of the ARC money we've already got, which we already matched that. ARC Grant Sewer Improvements was the 500 we did receive, the matching, which was a buy of ARP money, was $579,620, which we maxed. What you were saying, which we just applied for CDVG grants, which was just submitted, was $630,000, which our match would be $94,140. So, that's the total of $3,153,477, which we've either allocated or we're planning on hopefully it looks like we'll get. Now, that does not include what we can get once we do this rest of this legwork to complete, to work on our water and sewer lines. Now, we do know that we just allocated, well, it's the task order, for to repair the tank. It is done by the police department, for like a better tank, tank one. So, but this was actually sent today, and was it today? Stacy sent it to us, and she's the one that's now administering the grants, 'cause since John's retired, and she's now just doing contract work. She retired back in June. And this goes in conjunction with your report.
That's correct.
So, is there anything else? And one other thing, John, we didn't mention, that we had tabled the tap fee rate, and we had handled with the rate discussed. And as I told the council, whenever we came in tonight, Travis had looked at that, but he had not looked at the model thing. So, you had recommended he look at it before we passed the order. So, we'll get that till you this week. That's the reason it's not coming to you. So, yeah, I mean, my question is for Travis or for John?
What's the status on the RFP to prepare?
We would just, having our task order approved, we will begin immediately to put specs together. We'll have a NACE inspector come out and look at the tank to help put together the specifications. The coating needs to go on there, and so probably within 60 days, we'll have specs ready and be ready to advertise for bid for that. So, sometime probably within the spring. Now, they're gonna wanna do that once the weather is conducive to do the tank coating. So, I'm guessing in the spring sometime that that work will actually be done. It'll probably take this 60 to 90 days to get that work done.
So, we're looking at the RFP probably December, early December?
The best time to put that out is probably right after the first of the year. Typically, when you put a project out there in the holidays, you don't get as a good a response. Probably the plan would be to put that out right after the holidays, after the first of the year, and that way we'll get as much participation as possible. And usually, it's a 30-day window, submit the advertisement, it'd be advertised here locally as well, sent out to various bidding places, BidOcean and other builders exchange. And so, that process will be 30 days, and then once contracts are, we bring the recommendations award back to the board for approval. And then once that's approved, then contracts will have to be conformed and executed. That's usually another 30 days. So, so from the time of advertised to the time of those proceeds, probably 60 to 90 days by the time you advertise and get our approval and, and get your contracts and get the contractor's insurance and bonding in place, execute contracts, probably 60 to 90 day window from the time of advertised. So, we advertise first of January, it'd be April-ish before you get announced proceeding. Pick the best weather to do that type of work, so.
So, I'm sorry if you said this and I missed it. Have you got the flow meters in place, and we're waiting for rain now, or are we waiting for rain to place the flow meters?
We're waiting for rain in place, though. So, we would not expend that money while it's dry, because we're waiting. As soon as it starts getting wet, the groundwater starts building up, then we'll...
We're all waiting for that.
Yep, we're, yeah, exactly. So, probably December at the earliest, you know, even if it does, so we get a lot of rain in the next week or two, it's gonna be wet on the surface, but it's not gonna charge the groundwater. So, we want it timed to really get a good result and be efficient with the funds. So, so we'll wait. Probably it's gonna be December-ish at the earliest. And that's about the same time, we'd be looking at bringing the TV crews back to TV, the sewer system, probably around that same time period, once that groundwater begins to come up and get the rain.
So, once these things are in place, are they gonna stay in place so that we can monitor it over time?
Yep, well, they'll stay there for 60 days, you know, depending on what rain we see. So, we just need enough statistical data to look at the wet weather, be able to determine where the water's coming from, what volume we're seeing for what rain. So, we'll say if it's an intervent and it's still dry, we might not see that response. So, we need to monitor the data and make sure that we get that result. But 60 to 90 days is what we're anticipating, having the meters in.
So, if we were to find that we have a problem with one or more customers, I guess I had assumed that they would stay in place longer, so I'm just trying to figure out how this is gonna work. If, if we have problems with one or more of our customers, and we have to go into negotiation with them on how to get this INI reduced, does that mean that in order to actually quantify whether INI is gonna be reduced, we're gonna have to reinstall those meters again?
Yep. Or on the flip side, you can keep them installed as a indefinite permanent, which, you know, there's costs associated. We've seen it done, or...
What are the costs associated with that?
It depends on how many meters there are. So, if you got three meters total and the type of meter it is, we would really have to price that. So, with the subcontractor that we would bring in to do that, it's gonna depend on the length of time. And so, shorter, smaller metering projects are typically more expensive than larger, longer-term projects. They get price breaks. And so, it would depend if a meter was gonna be in for two years or two months. That cost per meter month would be more on the short term. So, that's something we could discuss, but...
Is that simply a monitoring cost?
It is. Well, it's a, it's an equipment cost plus a labor cost, because typically utilities don't have the manpower or expertise to perform that work internally. And so, you have, they have to send someone to the project site to collect those meters monthly or have a cellular unit attached so that they can be monitored remotely. And so, either way, there's a cost associated over time for that subcontractor, contractor to perform that work. So, so there's costs associated both ways. But you're correct in saying that even if we do identify where the water's coming from, the idea would be either to remove them in the middle of trying to figure out who's gonna do what and how much, and then either keep those in for that time period or wait until that, that type work is performed to such satisfactory that, hey, we're ready to put those back in and read and monitor, or keep them in the whole time and, and meet them. So, you know, there's pros and cons of both. If it's something that's gonna take a while to hash out, then in my opinion, it probably wouldn't be prudent to just leave the meters in and pay for them when nothing's going on. And so, my recommendation would be is once we have them in, get the information we need, figure out what's going on, pull them out, and then once everybody agrees on a plan, or here's what needs to happen, and then that thing happens, then they could be put back in to see if, yes, it was successful, no, it wasn't. And then at that point, it may be, depending on the outcome, that they need to stay in long-term for a billing meeting, because in some cases, the result is not favorable, and it can't be fixed for a while. And so, you may choose to fill for those, for that flow that's not being removed from the satellite system.
So, physically, whether it's a billing meter or whether it's an observational meter for short-term, it's the same meter?
That's correct.
It's just whether or not we wanna pay multiple deployments versus monitoring, monitoring, monitoring.
That's correct.
That would be the cost, wouldn't it, sadly, just to turn? I know before, John can tell you, they bought meters, and then by the time they ended up and calibrated and stuff, they're on the shelf, and they're outdated, 'cause you had looked at those meters, so that's because they're in two different places. I think they're still in there, but John?
Yeah, typically, I mean, in my opinion, I mean, there's some things that are, the utility, it's good to try to do in-house to save money. That is typically not a good thing, because expertise is not there, the software's not there, the manpower's not there. So, that's not a good place to, to save money and do in-house. It's a specialty niche. If you have someone, an expert that's used to that equipment, can run the software, certainly that would be different, but that's an exception.
Yeah, I'm imagining that if we find that it's just a few customers, that there's gonna be some sort of benchmarking of some timeframes where we're gonna be looking for some results. And I don't know, that's six months, it probably, it probably has to be a year, 'cause these are big projects to fix.
And at some point, you may wanna build for that, because this entire time, you're, you're taking on INI and treating and transporting, and so there's gonna be some back and forth on what happens on the in-between. So, that's, you know, that's probably something to discuss once we figure out what's going on, because right now, we don't really, we don't know, you know, where it's coming from and what's going on. But that's part of the discussion that probably needs to be had at that time.
We know the areas it's coming from, we just don't know the quantity, right? Because that's the reason we have to pay for the meter, because there's only two customers, MSSA and Travis City. I mean, and so, we don't know how much is ours and how much is theirs. That's the reason Travis recommended months ago for us to do the metering, so we know what our problem is, the airlines, and what's coming from the others. So, there's only three that we have to deal with, but we have to determine how much Montego has as a problem and how much is coming from the other two.
Right.
And that's the reason. Another point, we had talked about the ordnance for stormwater and flooding, which has now been handed off to MTS. Hunter Rogers, I spoke with her last week. John Charleston was off. She's not, did not get an update, but she said they are working on that ordnance, and as soon as possible, they will get it to us. So, MTS is completing that. I know you have worked on that as well. So, I just, and I didn't get this till almost one o'clock today. Do you have, anybody else have anything for us?
That was it, thanks.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. John, did you have anything else with utilities that you wanted to talk about?
No, I haven't.
Okay. Do you have anything else for John? Okay, we have finished your comments. I saw the chief just came in. He's been in training today. He's ready to report. Oh, you, are you now reporting? Well, we have Chad. Okay, we have Chad. It's reporting tonight. Thank you, sir.
How y'all doing tonight?
Hi, Jen.
So, we had 19 arrests, and on the 29th, we're doing a drug takeback. Any medication or anything that you don't use will be at the PD on the 29th, from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. at the police department.
Okay, and the 27th, they're gonna be there for the...
29th.
No, but the 27th, they are gonna be available too for the trucking.
For the trucking.
Trucking, trucking.
Yeah, they're gonna, they're gonna be there for that as well.
Okay. And I know that Keith's not here, but we needed one employee to help too with the trash and stuff over there that, that not as well. So, you don't care? So, do you have any other questions for Chad?
We all received an email about someone who was arrested and was not happy with that arrest. And I think the mayor had said she was gonna reach out to the chief and get a report for us.
Was it a DUI?
No, it was the one from Mr.?
John, it's Kristoff.
Kristoff, remember, and Jared did address that. He said that it has been dealt with. Mr. Kristoff was quoting a TC angler, and Jared said on two different occasions, I thought Jared just left. He's addressed that, and that's not it. He's done everything the town needs to do. It actually happened, did that not happen in Jasper?
What was, what was the arrest on? It's probably on one of my days off.
I don't have the email yet, because Jared said he had addressed it, and Jared was here earlier. Mr. Kristoff was arrested somewhere, and then he went through the court process, but he said one of our officers had not handled the information correctly.
If it was in Jasper, then that would have been Marion County.
It was in Marion County. I also did a rapid review. It was in Marion County, also the rock that arrested him, I mean, incident.
According to Mr. Kristoff, it was based on a charge, I believe, intimidating an officer.
Oh, yeah, I remember something about that, yeah. And basically, the way it was told to me, it was every much so. He, the officer had called on him and I guess when it was Officer Rayline showed up at the scene and he was parked out the guy's house outside the officer's house and he had made threats about it. And he had went out of his way to find out the address of the officer and actually go to his house. So, I mean, that's a that's going out of your way to find someone's address and park outside their house.
I know, Jared said he had addressed it both with with uh with Marion County, with Brown County, and with the officer. And and Jared, of course, left and I can't, he said a medical thing going on, but Jared said it has been addressed and we've done all we can. And he also said he called Mr. Kristoff and talked to him about it and and he's called him on two occasions.
Okay, now you could say you were gonna give us an update, so I was.
Yeah, and and so as far as I know, that's been addressed, but definitely that incident, when, you know, he asked people where this guy lived and then he shows up outside the house, that's definitely intimidation. So and and you know, it's it, you can't just show up to someone's house and make threats and then not expect something to happen with the law on that.
We we only got his version, so.
Yeah, and and that happens a lot. Uh, you you'll have people that'll have their version, but it's not the full version of what happened. Just like the same thing with a lot of these camera angles, they'll play part of a clip and that only gives you a half the story and it might not give you an angle. Good example, at the academy, they'll show a video of police shooting and you'll be like, oh, yeah, that's unjustified shooting. But then they only show the angle where the guy was turned like this and they shot at him. He actually had a gun, was shooting like this. They showed this angle where then you couldn't see the gun or you it looked like you'd been shot in the back. So, you know, that's one thing you gotta keep in mind as well. And there will be, you know, when you're doing your job, there'll be complaints sometimes. So we will make sure that we address everything and professional on every level.
No, I I was just looking for for.
Yeah, no, no worries. And I was, I it it had took a minute to refresh my memory then when she had said something about the stalking and the showing up at the officer's house. I remembered Officer Rayline talking about that, or Assistant Chief Rayline.
And I know that Jared said on two occasions, he had addressed this, he had calmly admitted one, he had also dealt with it with his reports. But Jared's been left, so basically we didn't have a couple of reports on. You have anything else for Chad?
No, but I appreciate it.
Thank you.
No worries.
We think. Thank you for what you did.
Thank you.
I I think we now have the fire chief and coach enforcement, is he still out there?
Hello, everyone.
Hi.
Hey, Travis.
I'm having a nice dress on.
Exactly.
On the brush fire again, we was called out again tonight, so we uh started on that. There was about a thirty acre fire off Crussell Road, Bluebird Lane area, uh Forest Street. This was yesterday, Forest Street come out and and you know, most fire department was there and called thousands of brush trucks. So burn permit season's in in session, October the fifteenth, burn safety dot org. We encourage everybody to get a burn permit and of course, now we're dry, so use, you know, use caution. But uh so far, we've had twenty-four calls for the fire department this month and we've used an estimated fifteen thousand gallons of water. There's two insurance recovery claims that I'm still chasing, I've not been successful on. Uh, I've addressed Tahoe, uh last meeting with mechanical issues going on. Um, still searching for a solution, something to come up with, uh something to come up with for that. Um, waiting on the I S O stuff, I've not heard anything for almost two months and that's one of them bills, probably I don't wanna call him. I mean, if he calls us, we'll be happy to to talk to him, but uh engine two, I'd ordered the hose for for I S O purposes. All the hose loads here, it's landing in the fire hall, so we're ready to get that going. Uh, the guys that spill tanks on the fire hydrants, they've been about ten to twenty a week, depending on the weather and the crew, how many guys we can get out. Um, Mont Eagle, once again, we're hosting the sixty-four hour state basic class. We'll begin that November the fourteenth. Instructor Terry Smith from Murkisboro Fire Department, Tennessee Fire and Code Academy will be the lead instructor. We've got registration for about three counties and about twenty members. Mont Eagle has four new guys attending to that, so that's pretty cool. And Mont Eagle was invited to South Pittsburgh for chili cook-off and and firefighter Kyle, excuse me, Lieutenant Kyle Underhill went and he brought Mont Eagle home to trail food for some chili.
Woo, yeah.
Kyle and Isabel does at the at the mountain, fire on the mountain, so. Anyway, um, that's kind of the fire department side, do you make any question?
Let me, let's go ahead and let's address this coordinate because you brought up the vehicle.
Yes.
We had, we discussed this um at workshop, that he needed a command vehicle. And we said that we would have to do a ordinance, which the ordinance is sixteen dash twenty-two, a budget ordinance amendment. And that is a ordinance amendment for the budget of the town of Mont Eagle for the year twenty-two, twenty-three. That would be increasing it for a fire depart- a fire department vehicle, command vehicle, correct? Out of the fund balance, the bonus sum of thirty thousand dollars. And so with that way, if he can get it from another utility district, then he can, if we approved this, um, of course, I have two ratings, then he can go ahead and purchase it and won't lose a vehicle like we've lost lease cars and things in the past that we needed that they sold. Because now it's hard to get vehicles, so.
And with that said, to the public, I'm, you know, right now I'm driving around the shitty Tahoe, which doesn't carry any water at all. And I I'd like to find a pickup truck ultimately for Mont Eagle to put a skid unit in the back of it. So we'll have some kind of brush truck or a quick response truck for, you know, for the town. So if we can find something like that, that I, you know, could make a dual purpose vehicle, I I'd love to try to get my hands on something.
It's probably worth pointing out too, Travis, that a lot of people don't realize that for I S O, having an incident command vehicle helps with our I S O rating.
It's credibility, yeah.
It's not just a a bonus.
Right.
Point, it's something that that helps us with our.
And I'll explain it to the to the council, you know, that Tahoe originally counted from the police department, I believe, you know, and it had a motor put in it afterward. The fire department had taken possession of it. Since then, that that vehicle sit in the fire hall and, you know, when they when they hired me full time, now that's my daily, that's my daily drive. So, you know, what's gonna happen to it, go wrong, going wrong. So, anyway.
So we have a, I make a motion to approve ordinance number one six dash two-two.
How's that coming in?
Any other discussion? Roll call, Nate?
Yes.
Jessica?
Yes.
Doraine?
Yes.
myself, yes. That's the first ringing out, and so you can continue looking. I know we contacted several different people and we'll keep looking for them.
Yes.
Uh, fire department, decked before you go to your other hatch you were. Y'all, we are gonna have guys there too on the twenty-seventh, we'll support the trucking.
We're looking for the handouts and the hand, yeah, thanks.
Yeah, well, we got some candy and some birds.
That's right.
I have a question. The um Jeep Tover, your, the fire people are gonna be there to have uh gear and if the public can try them, is that what it? Is that what I read?
The chili cook-off, Sarah.
Sure.
Yeah. No, I didn't see that.
Boy, I'm wrong.
I don't know.
Well, I saw it on Facebook and I didn't know if it's something you all really were gonna do or not.
It must be true.
Now, that was the South, you know, South Pittsburgh's what, when when Colin and went down there, I didn't correct me if I'm wrong, because he told me, he said, well, can we go, I said, of course you can. We were talking about this one last week, Stephen and I were going over some stuff. And so he said, we'll just cover the cost of the chili and of course, they went and he said Isabel did it. But they did some some type of drills, did they?
Yeah, they did.
Here to turn them, they did it down there, I've not heard of y'all doing it.
It's kind of a fireman mantra, you know, the guys get together and compete and just, you know, I know what you're talking about. I'm sorry, I I thought we were suing the public at first.
I was doing that, Sarah.
I didn't see, where did you see that?
That's on Facebook.
Well, I don't know about you, I don't know, your your sources may be different here, we talked about.
We'll check on it, Miss Jessica, so I'm coming up, I mean, I'm getting whatever they've got.
And I'm gonna talk to you about the fourteen training.
Okay.
Before we do the fourteen.
Well, playing meals and stuff for some of the stuff because our, and yesterday, of course, they were out all day, so we got them a water and paid for the meals for the people around.
Yeah, that's another thing I forgot to do in my report, but so when we was, uh, I think there was six structures threatened on Crussell Road, Bluebird Lane area. Um, we we saved two, there was Mont Eagle fire pole, hose lines on two and then property protection for a for a house off the uh Weld Road across from the dump there. And processed that we cut the tire on the engine, which I guess that's part of, I mean, that's just part of fire suppression. So there there's a, that that's underway, it'll be repaired tomorrow, the tire's been ordered for it and it'll be in tomorrow. We're still up in service and running though, so all of well, of that.
What was the, what was the source of ignition? Do we know?
I have no idea. It's the original car coming off Interstate twenty-four around the brake check area and that fire consumed from the eastbound side all the way to Crussell Road was the right flank of it, head of it moving towards Wells Road.
So did they mean one?
Could have been, yeah. So you're at butt, huh? Yeah. So any questions, fire?
You have any questions for fire?
Nope.
Okay.
So codes enforcement side, I've I've got five uh five new violations that I've created and served ranging from trash on properties, remains of previous structured fires, weeds, hog grass, and abandoned vehicles throughout the town. Majorities will be followed up on for resolution on October the thirty-first. They rank between ten and and fifteen days to respond to these. So there's three follow-up visits from previous complaints that I've I've entertained. There's one resident that was serving a door hanger due to weeds and hog grass. I've also got no response from that, no contact with that resident, so I'm just kinda waiting to see what happens there. Um, the the typical several vital signs removed from the area, uh some yard sale signs. Um, continuing to work on the rocky top situation, I've been in touch with Rodney and and his attorney a couple of times, monitoring the the vehicles, you know, moving back and forth. Um, November falls when the corrective action should be taken for the shreds in the fence. That goes to the dormant season, I gave them ninety days the on the on the initial. So that falls in November and I'll follow up with that in November. So any questions on the codes? Yes, Tony?
Yeah, I have, Travis, what about from Winston Avenue?
Yes, sir.
Have there been three houses condemned on Winston Avenue? Uh, what's the status?
I've got a letter to read for that that I've sent me today. I'll read it when it gets done on Winston Avenue, Earl sent a letter.
I think Earl was having on the.
Cause I I tried to get that greenhouse condemned over and over and couldn't get anything done, just all of a sudden they condemned three of them.
That's right.
So I don't, you know.
When you came up and you did it here, you said you didn't want to fill out the form, but you did it because we lost string. We did contact Earl. And then again, I got was talking to someone, I said, ask Earl if he had followed it up, so Earl did a follow-up. So I, Earl's been in and out, he's, of course, but I will read the letter if you want to. This was a letter that Earl received on October the fifth. Mr. Gary, thank you for your time and expla- explanation about my father's homes on Winston Avenue. I do appreciate the process. The letter here will give you the status on it. My father died in Georgia in late twenty twenty-one before the COVID vaccination. In May of twenty twenty-two, my mother was is eighty-two, she gone broke her hip, she was hospitalized, this is from his daughter. And had to go into rehab for eleven weeks during that time. We attempted to follow probate paperwork on our own with no guidance due to the pandemic, but the petition was ultimately ultimately rejected because of an error. We had, we had obtained legal help. Probate courts in Georgia took a long time for the process. Probate proceeds during the high death rate of the county due to the pandemic and reducing staff and they were working remotely. We finally got it in probate, April twenty twenty tw- twenty twenty-two. An investment bank in the business, a state tax I D number settled a few weeks later. Then we were returned to our attention that Tennessee probates are different than Georgia. It says in August twenty twenty-two, we were contacted by J E L K Jerk's Law in Chattanooga to help us move forward with the Tennessee properties. The state of these three properties in Tennessee counties, we were asked by our lawyer to obtain copies up from Hazel F F Douglas. Well, that was left to, left from my father, now, of course, that's the mother. We were unable to locate the copies in our files. We struggled to get them timely to Marion County, but eventually we received a scan for the probate records on September thirtieth, twenty twenty-two. Our steps with probate in Tennessee of obtaining the official documents from Georgia's probate documents in Georgia were sent to Tennessee in a packet with an affidavit from someone who knew my grandmother and my father to confirm he was the only child, the affidavit in the process. But as you can expect, we're beholdings to the court in obtaining a certification document that we have no control of. However, we have provided postage and the address of the documents that were sent to our attorneys ASAP. Since the properties were solely in my father's name, we cannot sell them yet. I am certain that the probate, as soon as it will finish, that it says we will not be able to loan the property, to loan the properties either. However, our intention, once the Tennessee probate goes through this, will allow for the sale of the Winston properties, we have asked our attorneys to expedite the process in the Marion County probate over these, the over the other counties. Again, thank you for speaking with me on October the fourth, she's referring to Earl. You may reach out to me and you can contact me by email. So they plan on selling properties as soon as they can get them out of probate, but this tells you what where they're at. And she provided Earl with those legal documents. And she says they want to sell the properties, but between the pandemic, between Georgia and Tennessee, and between trying to find documentation that he was an only child, that's what's helped him out and she gave us time frames and dates. But that's the Winston, that's the status of Winston, Earl sent that up here.
Edwards red tape.
And she wants to sell them too, she just can't, she can't do anymore.
Well, I talked to Jane the other night on the phone, so she pretty well told me her side of it too, so I just wondered what was going on with it then.
I don't know, Jane, this is from the dog, this is Carol.
Yeah, I just knew Earl took.
So I know, also, he was taking care of that, plus he's got several others that he's been dealing, that Earl's helping deal with and he's worked.
I think there's some other condemned property too that he's chasing around the city and that he, you know, he's got something going on.
So does anyone else have any other questions? Would you like to come up?
Well, I I I have a question on the condemnation thing, I didn't know when I needed to.
Well, if you want to, you can assist guys and do it now, because uh I know you asked me this and back to again, Mr. Gillingham, Johnny, you came up and you said you wanted to whenever you asked a couple of months ago about the Winston properties, correct? Because we can go back and look at the live stream, then another.
I asked about the one house. I asked about the greenhouse that was on two oh seven, I think, it was on Winston Avenue, like two oh five, I think.
If Travis was asked to go look and Earl had went and he looked and there was three houses, they said that were there that were mentioned, so I'm dealt with all three of them. That's the reason they were dealt with. But that was actually a verbal, you said your brother said here that turned in the form that day. So that's the reason Earl got the information from here and started dealing with.
I asked about the greenhouse, I spoke to Earl the morning he came over there to condemn my houses. He told me what he was doing over there and I spoke with Jane after that, that's the reason I was asking Travis. Uh, getting everybody's side of the story.
Well, there's no side, it was just, you said that they needed to be addressed and Earl addressed.
One of them.
Well, I just don't, he went and addressed the houses, that's what he told us. Danny, it's your turn.
Uh, yes, mine, uh, it's concerning codes enforcement, uh, it's it's concerning the property. Uh, three fifty-five North Left Circle, uh, they they have a condemnation notice on their house. But but I want to back up a little previous to that. I've been at several of the meetings and it's my understanding that the council voted that the policy on codes enforcement is you have someone has to come forward and file a complaint before that will be dealt with. Is is that correct?
That is the policy from, I don't know when it was actually.
Well, I don't know the date either, but this this council enacted that policy.
Unless that an employee, like one of the guys around for Travis sees something when he's riding around, you know what I'm saying? That would be the only other way, you know?
Well, we were told, the public was told, as I remember, that Travis is not gonna ride around in in spots.
Well, he's not, he's not doing it yet, that's what I'm saying, he has not, he started to get Travis.
We're on the same page. And then basically, you're saying we're on the same page?
We're on the same page.
Okay, so so uh thi- this this property on North Blue, I go by at least twice a day, sometime four, five times a day. And and uh it's what I call Billy Thomas property. Uh, uh, big deal, Nancy built that house and and uh built there and it it ultimately it burned and and it was a couple of years, it was sort of torn down and it was a problem. And and finally, this lady buys it and and she tears it down and 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 uh last year, uh, she's elderly and she's she's got tested here for three grandchildren. And and last year, they actually had a little portable building over there, they'd come and camp out for a day or two and and stay on the property. And ultimately, uh, they they, because of all this COVID stuff that everybody else blames everything on, uh, they they bought a modular home and 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 placed it on the property. And and uh, uh, it it was obvious when I drove by, the under canyon's not on it, uh, it was obvious they had no electricity. It was obvious they had no electricity. Uh, I didn't know about the water or any other issues. But anyway, I finally stopped one day and asked the lady, uh, if there was anything I could do to help her, uh, get where they could live in that house. And, and, and she said, well, Sonny, that you would ask, that the city has condemned it. And I said, oh. So I come up to City Hall and uh, well, actually I don't recall, but anyway, on the eighteenth of October, I came to City Hall and uh, with a, a public records request, uh, and, and handed to Debbie and she signed for it on the eighteenth. And, and uh, she said, we don't have anything as far as a complaint on this property. And I said, well, if my understanding you were supposed to have a complaint before it would be investigated. And she said, well, uh, we don't have anything. So, so I left and about twenty minutes, Earl Gary called me and, and said, I understand you went to City Hall uh, asking about a condemnation on, on North Love. And I said, yes, sir. And, and he said, well, I, I did the inspection. And, and uh, he said, uh, it, it was uh, no electricity, no water, steps at front and back, didn't meet current building codes. Second tank, uh, would have to have a permit, concrete blocks to be laid at the perimeter of the structure, its foundation to make it look like a site-built home. And I said, I understand. I left and, and, and actually he didn't tell me all those things in the beginning. I said, why did you go over there? And, and he said, well, uh, one of the aldermen, Nate Wilson, called me and asked me to go over there and inspect that property. And I said, well, why isn't there a record of that at City Hall? And he said, well, I don't know. You'll have to ask Nate.
And you asked me and I said, I didn't know and asked Earl. And that's how I found out, cause I didn't know it had been done.
So what is the policy?
So, well, we should have, uh, we, somebody should do this, so it looks like we're not picking on it. That's the reason we need a policy.
Subsequently, I asked Earl if he would send me a punch list with the deficiencies. And, and he said, sure. And I said, uh, he, he said, why do you need that? And I said, well, we're trying to help these people, you know, get in a livable home. And I said, if you're still going to retire, you know, the new guy coming in in November, if we do what you say, just verbally, then, then it may be, it's an ongoing thing. There's always two more things to do. And I said, it should be a punch list like the electrical is when the electrical inspector turns you down. He gives you what the turn down is and, and when you correct that, he doesn't do a reinspection on everything else. He just reinspects what the turn down is. And, and, and so I, I thought, well, that's kind of how it ought to be, uh, with this. And it may not be, but, but if it's not, it should be. But anyway, I, I guess it's, it's, it's twofold on, on the codes enforcement. It, it's going back to, to, I, it, it appears to me that depending on who you are, as to whether you get turned in for codes enforcement.
No.
And, and this lady, uh, it, it goes back to what I, I came up here several months ago and asked what the city was doing for, uh, housing, the housing shortage, helping people that needed help. And, 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 you know, you got, I don't know what your budget is outside of utility, probably a million dollars. Uh, and, and, and I see nothing that the city wants to do to help people in need. And this is a classic example of a family that needed some help. And I stopped, I stopped by there several times. And the other day I apologized to the lady. I said, ma'am, I've driven by your house for a year. Uh, or this side. And I said, I should have stopped a year ago. And I said, I apologize. So, so, but the point being, uh, I don't think, I don't think it's good public relations for the town of Mont Eagle uh, for that incident at, at, at three fifty-five, uh, North Love Surfer. And, and, and uh, that lady, uh, she said, Dean, I've tried. I'm waiting on the electrician. I, I can't find anyone to do the water. So Kurtie and I went over there next day, drenched in, done the water up to, to the side. Uh, Randall Henley, I saw him and, and he said, I'm on my way over there. And, and so I followed him over there and, and, and it's ready for inspection. I think it's got a, an approved, I think the inspector approved it and they're just now waiting for Swacit Alley to come and cook it up. And I told her I'd go back and, and uh, uh, take care of any excavation on her, on her setting, so. Anyway, point being, she, uh, she got three small children. Oh, and by the way, I, I stopped to show her this list. I said, I've, I've got to fill a list that the building inspector has given us, so they can change on us and, and add some more things. And she said, oh, I got one of those. And I said, how did you get it? She said, they sent the police over here and served it. And I said, oh, okay. So I didn't know we were in the business of doing that.
No.
So, well, she says she had that and it was delivered by the police department. So, so, you know, that, that says a whole lot about what this town is doing to, to an elderly lady with custody of three of her grandchildren. Uh, and I think she's doing the best she can.
And you brought it to my attention.
I can address, I can address this.
Wait, wait one second, cause I need to clarify here. Until you brought it to my attention that it had happened. And Earl called me the same day he called you. I did not know how this, and as I told you, we've fallen sick with it since then, and I agree with you. It shouldn't have happened that way. There should have been a form filled out. There should have been a process filed. I even called Travis. And I addressed the same day when you told me what had happened, so.
Was it, we're trying to help these people?
No, what I'm saying, that's what I'm saying is it shouldn't have happened that way. How come it happened that way? And why did you send your Earl over there?
What happened was, I, first off, we had heard a commotion late at night, went out there and saw that there were some people there. About three days later, I got a call from a couple of the neighbors asking about the house. Um, I went by to run, we didn't have water, electricity. I called Earl and simply asked about a certificate of occupancy because in every new construction, you go through the permitting process, the certificate of occupancy, and then people are allowed to move in. And I said, you know, it doesn't look like there's electricity on there. How, how was the certificate of occupancy issued? And what I learned in that is that with mobile homes, the permit is obtained, this is what's coming from Earl, so uh, the permit is obtained at the city and then at the point of foundation and footing, it's turned over to the state for the state to do the inspection of the underpinning and the documentation of electricity before the certificate of occupancy happened. And I said, so Earl, are you telling me the state didn't do that? And he said that that was actually fairly common on used mobile homes. None of this I knew, cause I was trying to figure out how to um, how, what the breakdown in the process was. And I specifically did, I specifically asked Earl, I said, Earl, I'm not making a complaint. He said, oh, don't worry about it. We'll go over there. That's not safe living conditions. We'll go over there and we'll, and we'll condemn it. And I said, well, I'm not interested in kicking a woman with three children out of her house. And he's like, oh, we won't do that, but this is the process and the way to do it. Um, that's how, that was the limit of my involvement in it, uh, other than he told me that he had done it. And I said, well, what are we going to do? How, how are we going to give these people time to figure this out? This is the conversation I had with Earl. Um, and, and it's the conversation that I'll have with anybody, because there is a breakdown in process when somebody gets a building permit from the town and a year later is living in that house without electricity and running water. That is a breakdown in process, just like you're talking about. And I was trying to figure out what that breakdown in process was. Sounds like it's at the state level and apparently according to Earl, it's common for used mobile homes. I didn't know that.
I think it's a modular home for clarification is what Earl told me, because you can't have, you can't have a drug in there. So let's just clarify that in that area. You and I talked about it, but the other one is another one that Travis is, was dealing with the side of it. But what we're asking here is why the paper book wasn't filled out and you went directly to Earl.
And I said, because I was not willing to fill out that paperwork.
But, but you said someone in the neighborhood called you.
And I suggested to them that they fill out the paperwork. They were not.
So in the future, if I have a concern somewhere in the town, instead of me filling out the paperwork, I can call you and you will address the issue?
No, you can always call me and I will look into the issue. And that's what I did there. Basically, we had, we had a breakdown in process there. And I, if you can ask Earl, I specifically said, I am not interested in evicting somebody from a house. I'm interested in getting them.
The notice of condemnation is, is, is on the house.
Right.
And, and, and I think it says, uh, that they can't be in it or whatever the standard is that's posted on, on the building.
So that was Earl's solution. And I said, well, I'm not interested in kicking them out. And he said, well, we're not going to kick them out. This is just the way it works in the process and.
Well, I think this particular incident stinks.
I think it does, too.
I think it's a crime of shame that we treat people in our community like these people have been treated regardless. Now, everything Earl put in this, Earl did his job on the inspection. I'm not, I'm not complaining that Travis isn't even involved in it, uh, to my knowledge. Uh, and, 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 and I'm not dogging Earl, because everything that he said here is what's in the code.
And that's important to look, to notice that I didn't call Travis to make the codes enforcement violation. I called Earl because there was a building permit that had not come to fruition with the certificate of occupancy. That's a problem.
That, 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 that an elderly lady with three, three grandchildren and nowhere else to live, uh, is that. And, and, and you can go through that same neighborhood or other neighborhoods in this community and there's likewise issues. And, 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 and so if someone called you, then.
No, no. The difference is there was a building permit issued on this and it, there was never a certificate of occupancy and a closure on the building. That was the reason I called Earl. Does that, you, I mean, you see the distinction there? The reason I did not call.
All I see is a lady living over there doing the best she can and, and, and this town has hounded her.
And no one is disputing that. But what we're saying is there was a breakdown in process with the town. The town issued building permits.
Always a breakdown. And so I was trying to fix that.
That's the reason we have documentation to follow a paper trail regardless of how it happens, so we don't get into these situations. But there was a breakdown, the whole thing around. And after you told me about it, we've fallen sick and like I told you then, the town doesn't have a budget for it. You had additional people that would help.
I, I have not asked the town to do it.
But I know, but you did. But we, after we found out there was an issue there, then we started doing it. And you're right. That there should be a process in which we do this.
There's, there's people that live here who said, whatever we can do to help, let us know and, and we will take care of that. And, and so when I went by to show the lady this, she said, uh, I hate to tell you, uh, Mr. Lake, but said, the next day, the Department of Children's Services came, uh, that they had had a complaint. And, and I said, well, ma'am, I don't know anything. But she said, oh, it's okay. She, she said, I went through the adoption process. I've dealt with them and I welcome them to come anytime and see that I, how I take care of my grandchildren. She said, but I thought it was ironic that the next day after I get this, that Department of Children's Services shows up for a surprise visit or inspection or whatever they do. And she said, but everything's okay with them. There was no, there was no problem. So, 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 you know, that just, that doesn't look good. And, and I don't know who filed it, complain. And, and, and they may have seen something that was valid and they should have filed a complaint, but, but it all looks like, it, it, it all looks like part of the same stain.
Well, FYI, I will take blame because I'm sitting on this council, but I never go by that house, so I didn't know anything about it. I don't play favorites. I don't care whose name.
And I'm not accusing you of that.
I know, but you know, and I will take blame because I'm sitting on the council, but I hate to think it's going on.
I want to jump in too and just say from code side, you know, I've been to, to residence houses and state limits on Saturday to chase chickens, put them back in the fence with elderly women. I've offered to mow grass from people that I've sided with. You know, just to try to strongen and uphold the town is what I believe.
But I think you're doing a good job.
And you have, but you have rules on those people.
Guy, and, and I mean, this is what I'm going to say to, to all of you. We need to decipher building inspector from codes enforcement. There's a line with that. And I think it get, kind of just gets overwhelmed and all piled over top of each other. And I'll look at y'all and tell you, I don't know anything about codes inspector, I mean, building inspector. I, I don't know anything about it. A condemnation was not my expected result of that. My expected result of that was to figure out why we went from, why you issued a building permit and why no certificate of occupancy was issued.
Well, I think citizens, I think the citizens of Mont Eagle's expectation, a majority of them is that incidents like this, if we see, can we help these people? Can we resolve this thing and, and don't go over there and post a notice to vacate and con- and condemn the property and, and, and tell you, we don't care that, that, that you're elderly. We don't care that you got three grandchildren and we don't care that you've tried to get people to come over here and do the job, but they can't, that, that won't anybody show up. Now, a- a- and, and that's the reputation that this town has in many things.
Well, it's changed.
Well, that's what we're trying to.
Well, that's why I bring it. That's why I'm here to bring your opinion.
This is what, what Dean's saying, that if we have a process, why don't we follow it ourselves? When he asked me, I said, I can't answer that question, cause I did not know it. I didn't even have the condemnation. It happened to that day. Then I called Travis. I did call Nate. Nate said he talked to Earl. I didn't know, cause there's supposed to be a paper trail and we could have circumvented this from happening, but we didn't follow the paper trail.
You don't, you don't rule. That's what everyone.
No, I'm saying, I know the whole.
This was not a codes enforcement issue. This was a building permit issue.
Well, it still should be, it, it still should have had a paper trail.
And it resulted in a, in a condemnation that I was assured by Earl wouldn't, wouldn't have any effect on their.
Why would you condemn it if you're not going, it's going to be in your.
It was not what I asked for. What I asked for was what happened in the process. Why, why was there no certificate?
Well, why didn't you ask the lady? You're, you're a councilman. Why didn't you stop and ask the lady that's your neighbor? She's actually your neighbor.
Because I knew, because I knew that a building permit had been issued, because Earl had talked about it at this meeting.
So I knew that I could do that and it wouldn't stop and say, ma'am, I'm on the council, uh, is there problems or?
Absolutely, because, not because I don't want to be neighborly, but because I expect Earl to tell me how the process unfolds. And Earl told me how the process unfolds and it sounds like there's a breakdown in the process when it comes to used modular homes. That's what I learned in all this.
And there's a breakdown in human relationships too.
And there should have been the process of paperwork followed and this would have never happened that way. I mean, that's just.
It took me a year, it took me a year to stop there and ask the lady. And I, and I told her, I'm ashamed that it took me that long. Uh, but, 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 you know, but, but I'm not on the council.
And it's been brought to our attention, there's people that have the money to fix theirs and they haven't been complaints filed and those need to be addressed from, you know, other folks. So that has to be addressed. It's not picking on anyone, but that's the reason we need to have paperwork.
And I, again, I'm not dogging you in any way or Earl. I, I mean, uh.
And you know, justified that in, right there where, where, where we're talking. You know, there's, there's one I'm chasing with a door hanger for hog grass. I'm sure you've got which one. There's one across the street that lost the house.
But anyway, that's my issue on, uh.
And there is a process and I will follow. I didn't know what to follow to. You let me know.
It, there was no codes enforcement violation issued, so there was no, nobody wrote a complaint. That's, that's the place where things are getting confused.
Okay, so we can just read people as long as it's not a codes violation.
No, no, there still should be a, there still should be a documentation. There should be a paper trail, so we know what's going on here.
Well, the property, the property had codes enforcement complaints on it before. That's why I knew, from under a previous owner, it didn't even have anything to do with Earl.
This guy could have went over there and found from the road several codes violations. Uh, he, he, uh, I mean, if, if, if you don't believe it, go by and look today. They're still there. Okay, so, so you're, you're kind of split hairs.
No, I'm telling.
You're over.
Okay. There's a process we need to follow to document it. That way we know when it happens and where, so we're not, and also if we can help someone, it's there. We, we need to follow the process.
I will call her and see if there's anything I can do.
Thank you.
And where I step, if there's anything we can do too, so.
And again, I knew nothing about it, but I'll take blame, cause I'm on the council.
But back to, uh, now we're at. Uh, planning commission, do you have a report?
The regional, uh, Mont Eagle Regional Planning Commission met on Monday, October the, no, I'm sorry. On, uh, November the, October the fourth. And, um, the council is considering recommending to the town council amending, I'm sorry, that's, I just. I, I lost my brain. The planning commission is considering recommending to the town council an amendment to the building permit expiration code. The amendment would give the building inspector the power to give an additional six months to a project to make substantial progress if, and if no substantial progress has been made after two years, um, they'll have to, uh, the project will have, need a new site plan. It's not formally written, but that's where we're working on, the work in on that. Then the planning commission is also looking at recommending to the town council an ordinance permitting storage facilities as a special exception, exception use in C two and C three. And we'll be investigating that at our meeting, um, the first Tuesday of November. And then the commission is also discussing changing the zoning ordinance requirement for paved parking to allow gravel parking. Uh, the further discussion will, will be required after the commissioners learn, uh, what M CAS's words wording is for parking lots. Those are the three things that we. Those are the three things that we really hit hard at the last meeting, October the fourth. Any questions? Thank you.
Next thing on the agenda is, uh, first reading of ordinance fourteen twenty ten, which is ordinance to add section five of table for accessory dwelling units, accessory structures, and the use of zoning ordinance of the town of Montegoal, Tennessee. Of course, this ordinance is one, two, three, four, five, with an application, six, seven, and it's like eight pages that will have to be. This is just the first reading of the accessory dwelling unit ordinance. So do we have any discussion or?
What were you getting on?
I'm glad we're into this point.
Yeah.
There will be a public hearing at the next reading for this, as you said now. So people can get copies of this. It will be also on the website once twelve after three minutes. So do we have a, um?
Listen. So what this allows for people who are are not aware is this allows on a single family residential lot for those homeowners, assuming they live in the house, to build an additional residential structure on their lot. It can't be more than thirty percent of the size of their primary residence. So it's not allowing a second house to be built. But it's allowing something like a mother-in-law suite or someplace for a child or an elderly person to stay. Um, as several folks have pointed out, um, this provision does allow, um, for that to be a rental. But it requires that the owner live on site. So this is different from a tiny home community where a a bunch of, there'd be just a bunch of rentals. This is saying, if you live in your home, you may build another structure for, again, your family or friends and for short-term rental. And it's a, it's a really great way to help folks in the community be able to either support somebody in their family or generate a little bit of income. We talk a lot about this, um, bringing tourism to Montegoal. Um, this is a way that homeowners can be involved in it if they would like to. But it protects the neighbors because it keeps a neighborhood of owner occupied. You cannot do this if you don't live on the lot.
And also.
It's a, it's a pretty neat thing. They've been doing it in several towns lately. I'm I'm glad we've gotten to this point.
But it will have to fit the definition of size. It's not a tiny home. It must be a stick build. It it's not rolled up like some tiny homes have been in the area.
No, you guys edited it on the planning commission to allow it to be bring in modular.
But it can be modular, but not, not a, not as a trailer, but some of, is what we're saying. There's different. It has to have the seal is to be a modular.
Yeah, you can't do it with an RV.
That's right. You can't do it with an RV. The other thing is if it's gonna be rental, they must identify it as rental because they have to get a commercial rental. They have to get a commercial meter for the, if it's state tax.
But all that's in you.
Yes, and all that's in the ordinance.
And all in here. And this is a harsh reading.
Yeah, so there's also a D restriction that goes that it can never be subsidized. I'm sorry, sub divided.
Subdivided.
Because, um, uh, otherwise it could be a way to skirt the the zoning ordinance for minimum square footage. So. I I think it's a neat ordinance. I'm I'm happy we got to this point.
And there will be a public hearing based on the ordinance before the second reading. It's, um, section four of this. So do we have a motion?
I make a motion. We approve.
Any other discussion? All in favor? Opposed? Okay. Now, parks and rec, um, Jessica, do you want to do an update there?
Yeah.
Before we talk about parks and rec, I wanted to let everybody know that I called Franklin County's solid waste facility today to ask about our cardboard recycling operation. They're still trying to get the, um, the bins where we put the cardboard adapted to fit the new truck that pulls them over and dumps them. Uh, in the past, these dumpsters were dumped from the side of the truck and that truck crashed. And they have a new truck. It has to, it has to dump from the front of the truck. So they have a welder on site. They're trying to, uh, do three hundred bins with a welder, putting new attachments on the bins to get them to to flip over the truck. So, uh, they think it'll be another two to three weeks before we get our own bins back. But in the meantime, you can go to the facility at Swanee for your cardboard. And other things should be, um, dumped at at our convenience center.
Okay, um, we've gotten completion of new playground equipment that will be put in Hannah Pickett Park. One of the, the little pods that was an add-on to the, the current playground equipment. And that equipment will probably come in right after the first of the year and be installed. Then, um, Thursday night, October the twenty seventh, from five to eight PM, we're involved with Montegoal Elementary School to have trunk or treat. And they are looking for people that might want to set up a table or a trunk to have candy for the children. You either have an option to be outside with your car in a trunk, or you can come inside where you can set up in the gymnasium. And you're asked to call and register with the school if you're planning to participate. On October the twenty ninth, from eleven to three o'clock, there's an event right behind us called Jeep Tober and Fire on the Mountain. There'll be Jeeps of all sizes that are 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 invited to participate. And there'll be, um, there'll be two classes of competition for the Jeeps. One is the scariest looking Jeep. And the other, um, category is the best decorated Jeep. And I think, I think the prizes are two hundred and fifty dollars. They're, they're a lot. There's also gonna be a costume contest for the best adult costume, the best children's costume, and the best pet costume. All of the proceeds from, um, this event will go toward improving Hannah Pickett Park. Arts and crafts people have been invited who who'll set up their shops. There'll be, um, kids' activities all day. And a chili cook-off from ten to two o'clock. Folks can pay five dollars to taste the chilis and vote on people's choice for the best chili, which is a two hundred and fifty dollar award. And then, um, there'll be the best decorated booth, which is a hundred dollars. The fire department will be there to do activities and I think that's a, that's a lot. That'll be on this coming Saturday. On November fourth and fifth, from nine to three o'clock, right here in this room, there'll be shop local where local vendors are allowed to come in, set up their booths to sell, uh, holiday, um, gifts. Um, and then the Christmas parade will be on December the third. The setup for the parade will be at the VFW Hall from, at four o'clock. The parade will roll out at five o'clock. There'll be, there'll be, um, three cash prizes that'll be judged on the day of the event. And we're also this year gonna do something new. There'll be a residential decoration and a commercial decoration contest for businesses. Um, the judges will be watching between Thanksgiving and December the third for decorations. And then those awards will be announced the night of the Christmas, uh, parade. After the Christmas parade, there'll be cookies and cocoa at Hart and Park and free photographs with Santa for all the children. And I believe that's everything I have.
This coming Thursday will be the, uh, fresh mass and the feast on the street. This will be the last one of the year. Uh, hopefully, there'll be a lot of people in town, but it just happens to be trunk or treat night. So hopefully, everybody will come out and do something to eat and go to school. That's all I got.
Nate, you have anything? Jessica, do you have anything else?
No.
Do you ring?
Nope.
Okay, well, yeah, three or four little things here. Nate, um, I'm just going to announce this. We did give the notice for to proceed, which I did let Patrick know about the grant. That is the multi-modal grant, which was applied for. So we got that. However, Katie Brown, um, she's a national, right? That's administering it, uh, has contacted me and the state of Tennessee wants to take, they're hoping they can take this grant back. It will, they have a project that's going to begin at, how many are your names? The mountain outfitters, correct? The sidewalk.
Right, right now, they have three, TDOT has three projects in the town of Montegoal. They have one that starts at mountain outfitters and runs to Waffle House, which is a sidewalk and street beautification project. They have one that is the bridge replacement where all three of the bridges are scheduled to be removed and replaced with two more modern bridges. Um, the decking on those old road bridges is cracking and breaking and there are actually pieces falling off of them. And then this third project was to start at Sonic and run through to the DeBose Center. And that's what the multimodal is. And TDOT wanted to combine them all into a single project, which is great for us. It may, in the short term, mean, uh, a little bit more headache in that there's more construction. But it's all happening as a single project instead of being three projects back to back. So it's gonna be great.
They're gonna integrate. They've got the exit project and the lining that that's already theirs.
That's part of the bridge project, yeah, but.
But that, well, Nate, Katie had told me their class of bank, that is three, plus the other one would be four. But if they, Nate said, if we can dance all four of these together, it'll be much better. Now, we have applied for another multimodal grant like we had done several years ago. No, actually, one we got, the other one the governor brought up here. And it would be for sidewalks and lighting and infrastructure. It would begin at, um, Highway and go to Montegoal. And of course, that's been submitted. So that's something totally different than what we talked about, the three million, uh, one hundred and some odd thousand that we are, hundred thousand that we're actually working on right now for its infrastructure. So that would be on downtown enhancement. That's one project. We did get notified. We have a new director of District Three, which is a very, he's a, he's really great to work with. It's Landon Castleberry. He was a national and he's been promoted to Allen Wells position. He's really good. He's conscientious. He's actually doing some studies for us on the interstate that runs there. Just a really good partner to work with. Though we were notified, as you know, as you came up the mountain, you saw a lot of blasting that was happening with the state. They hope to be done with that project by December. But they did notify us maybe like between January and March, of course, this is a state, that they would begin blasting on the other side of the mountain. And they will be contacting our utility department to make sure it does not interfere with, you know, our water sources and any of that. So they're, they're being proactive with that. We got that notification as well, early October, I think. We also said, on and down hers. I think that's all that we have. Calendar events have been announced. Now, do we have any citizens that would like to be heard? If so, please come up to the microphone.
I'd just like to ask a couple of questions. Since I listed Travis and Angela talk about the presentation on the sewer and the water and what Travis has been talking about, about the water for the last couple of meetings. What is that gonna do to the citizens on you folks increasing our water bill and all this money we're gonna be spending?
Well, shouldn't do any from that. I mean, as far as that, but if we go into a moratorium, it would. But if Travis had been here, he could have answered that. That's the reason we asked to get.
But what are you, what are you folks, what's your plan on increasing water rates and all this to try to pay for some of this?
Well, this would not be any that right now we have to unless we go into a moratorium. The rates have not been increased in ten years. Is what we were told. When we had it, we had a capacity study done, which gave us the capacity of our water. And TAUD did a water rate study. They did mention that there was a rate increase. It might be two percent per year.
So what you're saying, there probably will be a water increase.
Well, I don't know that. Now, Tommy, I can't answer that. I can't read just like I can't tell you the small rate.
I understand that. What about your city tax?
I haven't, I don't know what you think about.
Y'all plan on imposing a city tax on the town?
It's not been discussed. That's a rumor out there. And that's just a lot of rumors out there. So no, we, we can't impose. The sun's out. A city tax would have to go referendum. You can't impose one. That would have to be voted on by the people.
But are you gonna put it on a referendum to be voted on?
It can't be put on the referendum round. It's already prepared, so.
So your plan is not to do a city tax?
I don't know what you're talking about. I don't know what what's the future holds. But no, I'm not planning on a city tax. Are you?
I'm not, I'm not a voter.
No, but I mean, I didn't.
I just actually wasn't planning in the future.
I don't know. Have y'all said you don't have a city tax? Have y'all?
So you're saying you're against it and you're against the water increase?
Well, no, that's not what we're saying.
I mean, look in my eyes at me. That's what you're saying.
No, no, you said not against. I can't tell you what the future's gonna hold, just like Mr. Malik, who was up here.
But I don't ask a question.
No, I, I mean, so I can't read the future. I don't. Y'all wanna answer that question?
Yeah, I I I will say that we have been looking at the balance sheet in water and sewer.
Right.
And the, there is an issue with water and sewer in that, for those of y'all who don't know, the regular municipal budget and the water and sewer budget are different budgets that have to be treated separately. And by law, water and sewer can't lose money. And it is, appears as though if things don't change this year, water and sewer might lose money. And if water and sewer loses money for two years in a row, then the state steps in and figures out how to remedy it. And it tends to be pretty drastic. And that's what, that's what the mayor was talking about with the moratorium. So the first step in addressing that, and we believe we can address it for this year, was the, to raise the tap fees because of the consultant from the, you, the utility district consulting firm said that we were losing money on tap fees. And so that's why for several months, we've been talking about raising tap fees. I thought we were gonna vote on it at the special call meeting last week, and that didn't happen. And it it's been tabled again because apparently John has some questions that haven't been answered. But that's the first step is, and and the consultant has said that we are liable to be able to fix the problem um, this year by changes in tap fees. Now, going forward, we really need to dig into the budget and figure out what is, what is gonna happen and what are the drivers of those costs. We've been looking at them. And you're right in that if we spend all this grant money, we don't have to, we're, obviously, we're not paying for the infrastructure. But the state requires us to depreciate that infrastructure. And that is, is actually costing us money. And so that process, this infrastructure that these grants would provide, is not gonna be in place for likely another twenty-four, eighteen to twenty-four months. So there is, there's gonna be a process over the next three years, just like there's a process every year in every government across the country to figure out water and sewer that are enterprise funds that can never lose money. You have to figure out how to make that work. Now, we don't know, as Travis said, it'll be sixty days before we even know the, the new in investment we need to make in the water tank, which, again, it'll all be covered by grants, but then we'll have to depreciate it. So if, but we don't even know those numbers to be able to talk about them yet. Um, what we need to do is get our tap fees up so that we're not losing money. The earlier we do that in the budget year, um, the better it looks because we run on a July one to a July one budget year.
And we would. Only do that before the state pops in.
And we were losing money with that. But John had requested that, since they're making sure it's fair. And Nate had brought up, we want, don't want to charge one person one thing and another another. How do we do this? How do we create the ordinance? It may cost you this much, but if you break three of those drills, then you may have to pay the additional. So there'll be another document included. But the engineer said he would like to look at it to make sure that it is done because we have, um, TAUD, we have Swanies, we have Tracy Cities, and we have Big Creek. And so to make sure it's done smart and it's done the right way. So but to answer your question, I can't answer that. I'm just like you could when you were here, you know, so.
Park tax?
No.
City tax?
No.
I know you can't do the profit tax. But one other fact, hold on. I didn't know if Angela was gonna be here to, not for her presentation. But the, the problem I've had with Angela in the past, if you have an issue at your house or somewhere and you call the state of Tennessee and ask people Angela, Angela that sends them from the state up here, she sends John Contra out. You know, and if you have an issue, John Contra doesn't work for the state. He works for the town of Montegoal. I had an issue with him where some people was running raw sewage out on top of the ground. I called Angela. She sent John Contra over there. And they said there were not an issue there, which we knew there were an issue there. And so that's what I have found with him in the past with Angela.
We have a contact number if you wanna contact her and email her and express. We have a contact number if you wanna contact her and email her and express that. That's what we said, we'll have this, and you can get it from town hall.
I haven't heard from her now because she moved into a different apartment. But I'm just telling what I've had with her in the past. And she made a comment there that she's had, you know, you know, problems before, so... But, you know, I said, I didn't know if she was gonna be here tonight for her presentation.
She just called and said she wanted to be here.
So, I didn't know if she was gonna be here. But anyway, thank you.
Thank you, Tommy. Anyone else?
Yes, more? I'm gonna go through this quick, trying to fumble through it. I've never had to do this before. Uh, I work over at Easy's Dog Shelter in Tracy City. And, uh, we've been getting them. We give quite a few nine-one-one calls, which is great. Don't stop doing it. We're, we're here to help them. But we're just asking for a little bit of help, I guess financially-wise. Uh, is what I'm asking for. We're begging for like five hundred dollars from all the little communities to sort of help out. It's, it costs us about three hundred dollars for every dog we take in on a nine-one-one. And I did six this morning.
Do you have some form or document that you make a call request? Have you seen it here yet?
We have not, okay. I didn't know what to do. And I, like I said, we haven't had to beg and borrow, but we're just trying to help out a little bit. It does get expensive.
So, when you say nine-one-one calls, you did six?
We get dispatch. We have officers that call us. I was up at two-thirty in the morning a month ago with the truck stop, getting two animals out of a car. Lady was, uh, got the car blownish ride with handcuffs. It had two animals in the car.
So, now, I had to come to dinner.
They go to jail too, you know, people don't think about that, so...
So, like you're acting as our animal control officer?
Well...
When you can't be, in San Antonio County, we can support it, but I...
Right, we're in Marion County, but we help Marion County too.
We get, we get calls about stray animals, which I tell them, you know, that we don't have any type of pound or anything that we can do. And if they're not being aggressive or violent, really, there isn't anything that we can do for them, and we don't... And if they're stray dogs, we have no idea who they belong to, so there's no way of returning them to their owner or beating the owner if we don't know who they are, if we're not having them in a fence or on a leash. So, it is, I mean, we don't, it's the same with, like, homeless shelter. We don't have a homeless shelter here. But I did find a contact out of McMinville for help for battered women. It's for men or women, but, uh, so I've got that contact now. But I didn't know about the Tracy pound, but, uh, you know, unless a dog is being aggressive or attacked somebody, there's not much we can do with them.
We usually get calls, we'll get calls from dispatch sometimes. There's two dogs playing on the white line, you know.
And sometimes, if it's, they go to jail, we'll, I'll try to work with them and say, hey, can you call somebody to come get your animals? You know, or your vehicle, unless it's being pounded with blood and drugs or whatever, then, then it's being a problem for investigation, but...
We're not gonna stop helping law enforcement regardless, but, you know, figured we would ask. So, we can just say yes or no.
Well, if y'all are doing a service for us, I, I mean, that's a service that we don't have, but obviously have some need for. I think, I think what would be fair is just to, to talk about having some type of, of consulting agreement where we just pay you by the call.
Well, we need...
Careful there. We got ten last month.
Well, uh, uh, obviously, we'd have to, that's why, that's why I said we'd have to lay down an agreement. We'd have to figure out what that agreement would be like. But if there's a call where, where you guys, in particular, if there's animal welfare involved after an arrest, we have need for that service. And that seems like something we can help y'all out, and help us out too.
I would say too, though, you could charge the owner because it's their fault, their problem, they, I mean, that's something that you don't wanna place on the city for someone's fault. You know, same with stray dog. If we can find out who they belong to, fine them for that because that's not a cost that the city should have to incur because somebody can't be responsible for their animal.
Yeah, I, I, I don't disagree with that.
We usually charge them. We charge thirty-five dollars. She gets arrested. She got a dog in the car. He calls me. It's thirty-five dollars for me to drive. Go pick it up. And fifteen dollars a day.
So, you're, you're getting paid for that? Well, how often do you actually get paid? Or do you end up with more dogs?
You gotta remember that, if they pay.
So, you end up with more dogs than that?
Oh, yeah, I've, we've got, they have the two souls on the ground right now, and I have room for sixteen.
Do you guys adopt dogs?
Oh, we adopt them. We should, we, we don't, we're no kill. We're absolutely zero kill.
Do you charge for that too, to kind of help out? Obviously, it costs maybe charge people for adopting them.
It costs us seventy-five dollars to have them spayed and neutered. It costs us sixty dollars per animal for a vet bill. And then, we have shots, and then include gas, anything else. And most we can get is a hundred and twenty-five dollars a night. Math doesn't add up.
No.
And we go feed out a thousand pounds of dog food a month.
Can I ask you a question? You said nine-one-one, and you're in college, but that's countywide, right? That's not just Montegoal.
Yes, ma'am, yeah.
Yeah, that's not just Montegoal. That's what I was...
Oh, no, 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 that's not just y'all. I've got, right now, we've got that pit bull that attacked that fifteen-year-old out of Marion County. We have it in custody.
Well, can you get us the documents so we know what your organization is? I mean, your business is, and that kind of information, because this is the first time. We appreciate you coming to tell us.
I'm just asking, now we know what to do.
Might be able to reach out on Facebook and stuff like that for locals, to maybe, you know, the city. Maybe they might wanna pitch in that are, you know, really care about animals. They may donate money too.
And we're not, we're not trying to get any money out of it, but, I mean, it's...
Just to have a...
Right, there's three of us that are doing all of this, and it's a, yeah, it's a nonprofit. There's a reason it says nonprofit.
So, Chad, how does, how does that work if y'all need them? Do y'all call them, or do you have...
I've never called them, um, but that's, I've never had a, a call where I've had to call them. It, either the dog's not there by the time I get there, or, you know, it was a stray dog somebody was worried about, or if I get there, the dog's there, they don't know who it belongs to. It's friendly, it, you know, it came up wagging its tail or whatever. And then, I just let dispatch know that it was, you know, a call about a dog, but there's no issue here other than the dog is stray. We don't know who owns it. And then go back to Nate. Prior to this, I, I wasn't aware of the shelter, but I guess some other officers were aware of it, but, uh...
We did need cards and, uh, business information at the...
At the PD?
At the PD, yes, sir. That was a month and a half ago, I think.
Okay. I haven't had it. It's been a while since I've had a dog call, so...
What, what is the name of this shelter?
Easy's, and it's a word, Easy, E-A-S-Y, I should be S, Dog Shelter.
Jared on the left just passing some there.
And you probably seen my white SUV driving around with blue Paul Branson in it. There's a blue one driving around with white Paul Branson. That's us.
It's in Tracy City, correct?
Right in the downtown.
I know where it's at.
I don't know if they should get more calls on it, because I've, in about two and a half years I've been here, I think maybe I've gotten three dog calls.
Because that, that would seem to me, if, if Derek helping you guys out, then we could help them out by helping underwrite that.
Yeah.
Uh, because it takes, it takes you guys some time and labor, but that's, but...
And I can ask Jared, like, based on our calls and, and I'm, and I'll, I'll ask him and ask dispatch how many calls, because sometimes dispatch may not dispatch us if it's outside the county or whatever. Because they, our dispatch does Grunde and ours.
And some of the nine-one-one calls we get, the ladies know us at dispatch. The ladies call up and say, hey, there's no officer, but these dogs were reported here. So, I just count them as a nine-one, because I have to say that's nine-one-one when it comes up on my phone.
Can you get us some information, and then they can get us some information?
Absolutely. We can get you everything you need. And where do you want us to take that to? You want it to night?
Come back with it?
Well, no, she probably don't want it to night.
You wanna come back with it next month?
Absolutely, yes. Yeah, this isn't a do or die thing. We just, we'll, you know, cancel meetings up, see if we can, yeah.
Because I think it's a, it's a good relationship to foster. It's, it's helping the police out, and obviously helping some animals out too.
Well, that's what we need to get ahead, Count Chad. So, three of these had, if we find out from Jared, how many he's had. Because when you say nine-one-one, it could be, you know, we need to know what we're dealing with. Let's say where we're at.
It depends on like this morning, the nine-one-one I got. It was, uh, someone got, was arrested. Had the vehicle there, had six dogs in it.
That wasn't here, was it?
No, y'all, that was in Granite County. I don't count all of them, but I'm just saying, that was in Granite County. But it was an officer that called. It wasn't nine-one-one dispatch. So, you know, it's just, we get, we get quite a deal. We just have it for a little, really, not a whole, but just a little.
Yeah, certainly, if that happens in Montegoal, then we should be supporting you guys to do that.
Well, yeah, I agree with that. And we also need to, Dean brought up a good point that they used to do here with the churches to help people. And that's another issue we need to help.
My dog ended up at the sewer plant one time. Somebody had picked, I think it was police had picked, no, the police had picked it up and they dropped it off at the sewer plant. That's how I met John Contra's.
I know he was...
They, they said that's where, that's where stray dogs in Montegoal went.
Well, that's where the law of them used to go. We are, we're running it out of the mail.
Okay, thank you. Does anyone else have anything that would have saved country citizens here? Okay, do you have a motion to adjourn?
I'm not commencing to adjourn.
Do we have a second?[1795.42]